All right, um, well, why don't we go ahead and call the meeting to order at one thirty-four? Ty, do you want to chair this, or should I?
Oh, up to you. I mean, whatever you want.
I can. It'll be our last. It'll be my last one. Okay.
Your last hurrah.
My last hurrah. So we have an agenda in front of us. Have you had a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Are there any suggested changes to it, Shanita or John, Carol?
No.
No. Okay, so, um, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? Okay, I'll second it. So that passes. Um, now let's approve the minutes of the facility subcommittee meetings from June third, June twenty-fourth, and October twentieth. I feel comfortable making a motion to approve those minutes.
Okay, I'll second that.
Great. Um, and then now we have public comments. So I'm wondering if either of our public, if there of the public observing or participating in this meeting want to speak? I can't, uh, I, is, can someone else call on them? Oh, let's see, Damian says no, and what about Rob? Do you want to? Because will you just text?
No, both Rob and Damian said no.
Great.
I'm looking in the chat.
I mean, we're sorry we don't get here for you today. So, um, five, um, update from the executive director of facilities. So there's two items here, measure G and the projects progress and change order logs update.
Sure.
Why did you go for it?
Okay, thank you. So measure G, it's just a verbal update for Longfellow, just to let you know where we are. So we've had some really good conversation, as you know, during our last facility, facility subcommittee meeting, and then before and after that with the leadership over at Longfellow. So the board has now formally approved our architectural pool for measure G. So we're actually hosting, uh, we're interviewing three firms. We've shortlisted three firms for Longfellow. They're being interviewed on the thirtieth, only because they wanted an opportunity to come down for, before, just to visit the site. Um, that interview panel will consist of myself, Shanita, uh, Paco, the vice principal, Mrs. Morgan, or Ms. Morgan, I believe her name is. And then, uh, when is going to join us from the CTE perspective, as well as Paco wanted, uh, Jesse, their gardening teacher to join, uh, just from the outdoor space perspective. So that will be on the thirtieth. We're giving each one of the, uh, firms actually an hour and a half, which is longer than we would normally give. But what we want is not only a presentation, but really just a good opportunity for Q and A with the school's leadership and with the team, so that there is real buy-in from the school on who we're going to be working with, and how we roll out a, a meaningful and very public engagement process with the school community and the community at large, uh, just to ensure that we're putting forth the right projects for the school.
Great.
Nice question. Yeah, thanks so much.
Okay, yeah, and in the notes, there's a Vicki is trying to get on if we can let her in.
Okay. Um, thanks, John. Um, so I'm just looking at the, reminding myself from the minutes, um, that, that when we last talked about it, you thought that the interviews would take place in the, in time to bring it to the boards, meeting on the eighteenth. Do you think with this slightly pushed back timer, we can bring it to the board on the ninth?
Yeah, that's the intent. And the pushback timeline was just, one, to coincide all of our schedules on the district side. Um, and then, two, it was also to give the architects the opportunity to get out to the site. We were really, as we talked about in the last meeting, we were working on this really aggressive schedule. But the reality is, is we want to make sure to have the right people at the table. Um, I don't want to be making these decisions in a vacuum. So that's why we pushed it, but I don't think it might be a problem.
I think we consent on the second. If, if there's any rush, otherwise the ninth is fine.
With it being on the thirtieth, we wouldn't be able to put together a document for the thirty, for the.
Right. The ninth is fine.
The night, okay, and then, and then add that, I'm just also on the, I'm reminding myself of the minutes that, well, this is my, I expressed this, that the board should be transparent in the November board meeting, which now I think we're saying we get the November, December ninth meeting, that we had a timeline that we, that we're not sticking, that we are no longer sticking to, but here's a new, I think we had talked about at that meeting, being really clear about what the new timeline is.
Yeah, right. No, and we'll lay that out. We'll lay that out on the ninth, because once we decide on the architectural firm, we may not have their full pricing for the ninth, although I've given them a budget to work off of, so we may. But regardless, what we will have is we can sit down and work out timeline with them and whatnot after that.
Okay, because. Yeah, okay, great. The only reason I emphasize, why I emphasized it last time and emphasizing it now is that it's not that common for the board to have a whole, have two whole meetings where we, where we direct a specific timeline. And we did in the spring. It is now completely different. Um, so I just want to make sure that we're, uh, you know, that we're like, own up to it with the community and that we're really clear about what the new timeline is that we plan to stick to. And I'm not saying it's anybody's fault. It's just that it's a difference, you know, the community, community has been told by the board.
No, absolutely. Yeah, it's been an interesting year and we're, we're definitely doing our best. But yeah, I'm happy to do that, Ty.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, uh, if we go to five point two, and I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. All right, can everybody see that?
Yep, well, I have it up also.
So I just, uh, what I did is, we often talk about in the update section, we talk about projects, and we also talk about total cost of projects and change orders and where we're at. Um, and I just felt it would actually be better to start giving you this document in the subcommittee. Um, as you know, everything that we're doing currently, with the exception of, uh, the Berkeley Community Theater is done on design bid build, which is lowest bidder. And as we've talked about many times in board meetings with delivery methods, design bid builder and, or design bid build unfortunately typically does relate in a lot of change orders. Um, so the target is always ten percent or less, and if it exceeds ten percent, we have to come to the board with a futility resolution. So what I've done is all of our open projects currently, right now, I've put into a spreadsheet. Um, West Campus, you'll notice ninety-eight percent done for increment one. We're actually negative on the change orders. But the reason for that, just in full transparency, is we did add eight point two million dollars back in February when we increased the scope exponentially on this project. Uh, increment two, we're currently at thirteen percent, and to be honest, I expect it to continue to climb. We've encountered a, a number of unforeseen conditions to not only include structural issues, not structural issues with the building, but with ancillary items of the building. And what I mean by that is the plaster ceiling or the light boxes, et cetera. And we've also encountered a lot of asbestos-containing building materials, a lot of lead, things that weren't in the bid documents and we're coming across. Rather than burying these items, so to speak, what we're doing is, since we're in there, we're taking the time to address all these issues and address them now. And we're having to make major changes from a structural perspective in the back of the theater to accommodate ADA. Um, both of our CTE projects are currently in the closeout phase. The community theater increment one is at ninety percent with zero percent. That was as least leaseback. And increment two, which is the forty-two and a half million dollar construction project, that's at zero percent. We've just begun. Um, a lot of these projects are actually in closeout. One thing I will note is the Sylvia Mendez, I saw, I caught this earlier, uh, as a typo, the seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollar budget. Uh, that's actually wrong. It's a two point three million dollar budget. So we're significantly, we have zero costs in change orders. Our total project cost on that, we're anticipating to be eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, total construction cost, excuse me. Um, the other ones, just, and what I want to point out is what's in red, because that's what we do want to be concerned with. Uh, our Longfellow street crossing is at seventeen percent, putting the total project at a hundred and seventy-five thousand. What this is, is the city of Berkeley requirements changed between the approval and the construction. And since this is a city job and not a DSA job, they, as the governing authority, have the right to actually push those changes on us, regardless of the fact that the project has been bid. And this dealt specifically and only with the street crossing and the gates that we have installed over there to protect the kids as they're walking between the main campus and the cafeteria. Prop thirty-nine lighting, huge number, forty-seven percent. It was totally strategic and it was planned that way. What we realized is, since we had an energy efficiency contractor doing this lighting project, what we were able to do was maintenance was, had another project that they had sitting sort of in the wings that they were waiting to do. And what we've done is we've combined that, we've combined them. So the difference in cost that you see of two hundred and eighteen thousand was actually a budgeted cost out of measure H. So this project is now cross-funded between measure I, the bond, and measure H, the maintenance tax. We show the forty-seven percent just in interest of full transparency. The reality is, is we had zero cost overruns on this project. John Muir Cafeteria, we're at ten percent. Uh, biggest changes on that is what we found was the flue, which is the exhaust essentially for the boiler, going all the way up through the three stories and out the roof had to be completely changed. And we also found a lot of dry rot underneath the floor in the, in the cafeteria. And while this project was only for the servery and not the cafeteria per se, since we're in there doing construction, we've taken that opportunity to correct these deficiencies. And that dry rot also extends into the columns themselves, the supporting. Love. So we're having those addressed at the same time. Um, the long and short of it is, is when we see these change orders, they're, for the most part, they are very strategic and we're doing them with the intent to correct all deficiencies while we're there, because it's cheaper to do while we're there, and it's the right way of doing it, as opposed to having to come back later. So all in all, where we are is we have seventy-three million dollars of original contracts with, uh, updated contract values of the change orders. We are at a total of eighty-two million dollars in open work right now. And we're averaging six point nine seven percent, but as I indicated, that will drop due to the, uh, the typo that's listed on Sylvia Mendez. So if there's any questions about this, I'd be happy to answer, uh, or we can move on. Let me go ahead and stop sharing, if, or would you want me to keep this up for a moment?
Um, I think.
I have it on my computer.
I, I think I'm good. Thank you, John.
Okay.
Um, I think this looks really good. I think one thing I would mention is that I think down below, like the John Muir Cafeteria, for example, if you could just put some notes in there, that would be helpful.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, and I apologize. I actually did finish this late Sunday night, so I'm sorry. I, I noticed today there were a couple of lines where I forgot to drop some notes in, so sorry about that.
No, that's okay. And, you know, in general, this looks, you know, this looks great. I think, you know, the, the West Campus, obviously, the thirteen percent there is a bigger deal than forty-seven percent of the lighting.
Correct.
So, um, although I don't, it just sounds like that thirteen percent doesn't include the eight million new dollars, right?
No, so the thirteen percent is on the increment two, and the increment two is only, um, the theater.
Uh, got it.
Uh, so they're, they're actually two separate projects on paper and two separate contractors. Uh, the eight point two that we added was specific to increment one, uh, because that's where the scope had changed. That, that's where the board authorized the approve or authorized the change to all the scope and the addition of all the scope.
Okay, so you might want to, I mean, I think this is, I really do think this is very helpful. Um, I think with West Campus increment number two, you might want to put, excuse me, like, the theater.
Okay, yeah, that's great feedback. Thank you.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have probably a new member, well, there's a likelihood that there'll be a new member on here, and I mean, even if they're not new to the board, they might not be as, like, they might not know all these, all the shortcuts.
Absolutely. I appreciate the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, so let's move on to number six, discussion of upcoming board items.
Sure.
A is the design build deliver method present, presentation.
Yeah, so I'm going to jump in there. So this here is, we have, as I mentioned before, uh, the board approved that we move forward, uh, and we always, we, we have the ability to now consider lease leaseback as a delivery method for future projects, and we've done that for the community theater. And what we're seeing just upon completion of increment one is so far, that's happily working out great, um, as I intended. So I want to talk about the delivery methods, and I'll try to be brief, but that we are currently using, and then another one that I hope to incorporate. So, um, currently, this is the outline, you know, project delivery methods and what we're used to be. And then what I want to talk about specifically is, uh, utilizing what's known as the design build process. And where I want, like to consider this is, I'd like to bring this to the board is can be considered for all future projects, like we did with lease leaseback, based on the recommendation of staff. But there's three targeted projects where I'm really thinking that this makes a lot of sense to do. Uh, one is the BHS parking structure, uh, with the, with this, with the tennis on top. The second is the district-wide solar implementation projects across, uh, all of our sites, and then various other projects, uh, as recommended by staff. So, delivery methods, it really, when we talk about a delivery method, what it, what it's dealing with is the money, the risk, the reward. It's the methodology and how we deliver it. Design bid build, for example, lowest bidder creates an us versus them mentality, uh, with the contractors. And it usually does result in a lot of change orders, and we really try to work on a more collaborative approach. So when you're choosing the delivery method, critical, critical considerations are really the impacts of pre-design. And what we call that is pre-construction services, and then during the design phases, um, considering all the options at the earliest time, so really when we're conceptualizing the project. And then it, it sets the expectations and more importantly, the tone for the entire project. So design bid build, this is how we have typically done it, traditionally done it in the past. And this is the, the methodology that's known as lowest bidder. And as you see, you have a very, very linear line across the top of the district, the construction manager and the architect, and on the, underneath that, you have then the general contractor above all the subs. This is very, very clear and distinct about us versus them. And it constantly, what happens is because the subcontractors are working under the general with no interaction, you, you, you constantly find that the job is getting nitpicked for change orders. Um, and a little bit about that, we talk about here is the selection is based only on the price. It's lowest responsive, responsible bidder. And what that means is responsive is really that they've checked all the right boxes on the bid form, and responsible shows that they have the bonding capacity to back, to ensure their work, and that they're able to do the work. And that's it. There's, there's no, there's no best qualifications there. Um, fully coordinated plans and specs are critical. And what that means is that if there are any variations, omissions, deviations in the plans, you will see additional costs constantly build up. I will tell you, no matter how good the architect is, there is no such thing as a perfect set of plans. Um, and architects will tell you that as well. And the other thing is, a lot of our buildings, we have a lot of unforeseen conditions. And when I talk about unforeseen conditions, I'm talking about what's in the walls, what's buried in the floor, and that's just due to the age of the buildings. So if we're able to get away from just using design bid build, we can deal with those unforeseen conditions in advance um, by choosing the proper delivery method. Change orders are incredibly common. There's no early builder involvement to review plans. Where this is important and where this hurts us is the builders don't get to look at it and then ask the designer the questions, being collaborative of, did you consider this? What about this? Have we looked at this? And then looking at a constructibility review. And the constructibility review is important, because what it does is it allows the contractor who has the experience to actually go back and work with the design team of saying, you know, that works, but if we do it this way, it works a little bit better, and we can do it cheaper for the client. That's, that's the environment that we want to create, and that's one of the things that we have created by using lease leaseback. As you see with lease leaseback, it's really, so the district and the architect are working unilaterally, or side by side, I should say, but it's above the lease leaseback, and the lease leaseback contractor sort of comes into that fold. With that, it's, it's a very collaborative approach. The district makes the selection based on best value. So price is included in that best value selection, but it's actually the last thing that's scored after you, you shortlist and interview the firms, and you look at what their experience is, what the approach and the qualifications are. So the board has already authorized this, and we're currently using lease leaseback. The next one to consider is design build, and that's what I wanted to talk a little bit about today. So design build, you have the district, you have a construction manager, which is used ninety-nine percent of the time, although it is optional. And then depending on the complexity of the job, um, and really what the scope is, you may use a bridging architect as a consultant to create an RFP. Once that's done, because it's an RFP, again, it's, it's chosen and awarded based on best value, and that base, best value, again, price is considered. But more importantly, it's really about the best fit for the job. What are they going to bring to the table? The design build entity is the architect and contractor joining and creating this single entity, and then they work directly with the contractors below. Some of the, some of the key points of this, uh, it's a single point of responsibility through design and construction. Uh, it promotes creativity early in the process, along with it's incredibly collaborative, just like lease leaseback. Um, you have a really early ability to look at a guaranteed maximum price because of the fact that your designer and your builder are now one entity. So they're working together collaboratively, as opposed to on their own separate pricing schemes, to see what it looks like. Um, legal requirements for selection, it's a little bit complex, but the legislature has continued to streamline this. And it is a multi-step process, again, depending on the complexity of the work, uh, or the size of the work as well. So sometimes you'll have those bridging documents prepared by an outside, uh, entity, such as another architect. Sometimes those bridging documents are written by someone like in, in this office here, and then they're put out for RFP. Um, and then we pre-qualify the team, uh, and we send out requests for proposals, and we go from there. Um, future project considerations, where we, we, we've used design bid build, we've used lease leaseback. Um, we've seen the, both the positive implications of lease leaseback. We've seen positive, but we've seen, I think, a lot more negative on design bid build. Um, so as we're moving into measure G, and we're getting ready to roll out a lot of large projects, but also a lot of very complex projects, it's really in our best interest to consider another delivery method. So BH park, BHS parking structure with rooftop tennis courts is a great example of what, where we would do design build. We have not completed any design work on this project yet. We're just getting ready to recommend a sequoque consultant at the same time as we would recommend a design team. We have some conceptual building program elements, but not a lot. Um, these can become a basis of design during the bridging documents, right? So we would work with a bridging architect for this particular project with what we know the program elements to be. And then that would be used to define, uh, the project during the design build selection process. It's a very constrained site, as you all know. Uh, it's a small site, but there's also a need for creative design solutions. We have a commitment to keep these tennis courts open for the public off school hours. But with that, through design and through engineering controls, we have to consider safety. We have to consider homeless population. We don't want homeless living inside of the parking structure, but we don't want the parking structure to become something that becomes difficult to enter for the teachers and for the staff at BHS. So there's a lot of design solutions that we have to work out early on. Um, we have a budget, but we really need early pricing certainty on this. The budget is not tremendous. And the budget was built on a model that my predecessor had done, uh, a long time ago, and that bought, that model shows significantly less parking spaces than what's needed. So we really need to be able to work with a collaborative team to sort of maximize the efficiency and maximize our dollars there to get as many parking spaces as we can. Um, and again, it, it shifts our design risk to the design build team. That's the first piece because of the fact that there's no longer a need for absolute perfect plans. The designer and the builder have done this together, so if there are errors or omissions in the plans, they own that, and it doesn't come back on the district. It's their responsibility to correct. Um, and the architect becomes part of that contractor's team, and that's what helps move that along. So very briefly, what this product, what that looks like according to ed code, uh, the design build process, and I won't read it verbatim. I'll just sit back for a minute. You guys can look at the boxes.
You can move along, John. I mean, we. Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, everyone has it. So, um, the next is, or the, the next steps, really, uh, we would recommend using design build on the parking structure as well as solar. Uh, we would ask to, for the subcommittee's approval to bring this to the board. Um, and we can bring this to the board on consent. There is a resolution and some other formalities. Uh, and then we would, uh, board approval of updated conflict of interest policy. That's just, that's part of that paperwork. Uh, board approval of contract bridging architect, and we would bring that once we select the bridging architect, and then prepare the bridging documents to help set up our scope. So with that, um, there is, again, pre-qualification of design to build teams. We would typically pre-qualify and then interview. We would shortlist it down to two to four teams to interview. Um, and then, uh, best value selection process, and then it would, just like every other contract, it would then go to board approval. So I'll take any questions on that. You're muted, Judy.
You're muted.
Sorry, Ty, do you have anything?
Um, was that Al, was that Allison?
That was Allison, bringing me my computer charger.
Okay. Um, no, I, John, I totally, you know, I, I, I think on these kind of things, I really defer to your judgment and expertise, and the board, you know, is, is given, I feel like the board's giving you authority to, to make the, the right calls and the best way to bid these different projects. So I appreciate all that work, but I don't have any questions.
Thank you.
And I, um, I, that's, I, you said that to me, um, you, earlier. Ty and I agree with you, but I do actually think that this is a significant change in the way that we would take bids. And so I think putting this on the agenda for a general board meeting, um, with kind of a more abbreviated summary of what the differences are, I think would actually be helpful for people to know, because the difference between the two, the two is very different, or the three.
Something like we did for lease leaseback then, uh, about two years ago. When I first came on, I brought a, a presentation to the board, a very high-level presentation summarizing the changes before it was approved. So I can put something like that together, Judy.
I mean, it's really up to Ty, because he's going to be the new president, but I think just kind of going through what the differences are, I think it's, I think, then, you know, this is so much money for us that it seems, what I think I would, I would emphasize is how the district's interests are protected in each version. What do you think about that, Ty?
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's true, you did do that for the lease leaseback, John. Um, so, I mean, I would, I'm open to that. I wouldn't want to delay it if you want the approval of this on, I mean, we could, we could, um.
We could approve this for current projects.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think the board's going to object, but I think to, to be public about it and have a short presentation and discussion would be helpful. So, um, I mean, it could go on for action on the ninth, I guess, with a short presentation, but I think that's going to be a very busy meeting, and, and it's going to be our last one of the year. So I wouldn't, you want to get this approved on consent on the ninth, right?
Well, I think it'll be helpful, just as we are trying to roll out a lot of these projects, where we know we have a long planning process ahead of us. Um, and the other thing is, I, to, to Judy's point, and I recognize that we do want to get this out there and really make the public aware of the changes. We've sort of done that with lease leaseback. There's not a whole lot of differences between design build and lease leaseback. Uh, there's some, there's some differences more on the, the paperwork and the legal side. But at the end of the day, what it comes down to is just being able to choose on best value.
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we talk about it with Dr. Stevens? About whether it should be on consent or whether we want to have a short discussion about it, taking, taking Judy's suggestion into account.
Sure. I'll make a note, and I, I mentioned it to him on Friday, and then we can all get together on it if you'd like.
Great. All right, so now, do you want to do your last presentation?
Sure. So the last one deals with, um, the last one deals with design build, design bid builders, or excuse me, design build as well. But what the, the difference is, is this can actually be approved. This project can be approved by the subcommittee to go to board as this, because it would be under government code section forty-two seventeen. We've used this before in the district. I have, when we've done some of our prop thirty-nine projects. And what government code, code section forty-two seventeen does is it allows us to award to a design build entity based on best value. So it gives us all the benefits of doing a design build, but without the formality of having to have the board do the, um, uh, the resolution and all the backup documents in advance because of that government code section. What I'm talking about specifically is the natatorium project. The natatorium project has been approved by the board when I took the reallocation to the board last month, or I think it was earlier this month, actually. Um, and this was the project that it had a tune of, I believe, nine point two million. And what this project was, was the feasibility study for it that we saw was it's our largest energy consumer in the entire district. The air handling system for that pool, for that natatorium, was designed inadequately. There is a myriad of issues with it, and it's why we continue to have problems, not only with indoor air quality, but also. not only with indoor air quality, but also with water quality. We also constantly have breakdowns and the equipment is already worn out. Because what it's doing is instead of exhausting enough of the chlorinated air and pulling fresh air from in, from outside, what it's doing is it's actually pulling the chlorinated air back through the system, which is then corrosive on the system. So this project in a nutshell is, it's, it's a large project because of what we're gonna do. We're gonna fix the air handler system. We're gonna do all the structural upgrades that we need to do. We're gonna redesign and replace the air distribution system. But then also, like I said, this is our largest electricity consumer of the district. So we intend to put three hundred and seventy-five kilowatts of solar on the entire west side, or excuse me, east side of the campus. And it will actually make this our first Z and E building, zero net energy, with the exception of the gas consumption. We don't have a large enough footprint to put enough solar to remove the gas boilers, the heat that heat it. Um, and then lastly, it's a small item, but it's an important item as part of this project is actually to put an electric pool cover on it. And the reason for that is there's a manual one there right now. I don't think it's ever been used because it's incredibly difficult to take on or to put on and take off. But because it's not used and because of the temperature that the natatorium is kept at and the high humidity in there, we're currently losing on average of ten thousand gallons of water per day to evaporation. That, that's a tremendous amount of water.
Depressive.
Yeah. So what my intent to do is, is I, I've just sort of zeroed out a high level, what the project scope is. And again, the board is already aware of this. You are both aware of this. This has been approved. Um, but there are some other pieces to this. We would have a trichloramine exhaust system. This would eliminate not only the overall air quality problems, but the air quality as it lingers right above the water. Cause that's what impacts our student athletes the most. Um, we would also have a monitoring dashboard that monitors, measures critical pool systems, it measures the CO2 levels, it measures the air quality, et cetera. And we would really see a significant benefit, um, to the overall air quality and then the health and safety of our students and staff. Um, let me just, I'm gonna try to go through this a little bit quickly because I know we're pressed for time. But again, forty-two seventeen, this allows us to ward, to award based on best value. Natatorium design is not something that every architect can do regardless of what they're going to tell you. Um, so it's really about finding the right people to do the job and making sure that their price is there. Um, I'm very comfortable to say that I've already found the right people. We've partnered with them before. Um, and it's my intent to bring them to the board for approval under forty-two seventeen. The other piece, and I put it in bold here, is when you partner with an ESCO, an energy services company, which is my intent to do for this, to bring this to the board, is we can get a performance guarantee. And what that performance guarantee relates to is they're gonna do all sort of, all sorts of modeling to look at, to ensure that the three hundred and seventy-five kilowatts of solar, for example, is enough to produce a Z and E building. They're gonna guarantee that the, you know, that the overall health and air quality is at X. That performance guarantee is written into the contract so that if we don't see that production in solar and we'll just, I'm gonna use arbitrary numbers, but we're supposed to have a zero electric bill every month. And at the end of the year, I O P G and E fifteen thousand dollars for that site. The company that gets awarded this contract is going to have to continue and continuously write a check to be USD every year for fifteen thousand dollars. They are actually held to that condition of the performance. Um, the key points.
Is that normal? Is that, is that regular practice?
It is when you award under forty-two seventeen to an ESCO, you can write it into the contract. Um, so the key points of the redesign, the existing roof mounted system, it, it extracts at the roof, it sits thirty feet above the pool. Um, the high exhaust system, all that it's really doing is any good air that's coming out of the HVAC system up high, it's exhausting it right out. So that bad air that's lingering down low in the bottom twenty feet of the room is never moving. And the chloramines, that's off gassing from the surface of the water. It's heavier than air, it hangs directly above the pool. This has the biggest impact to our, to our student athletes and their health, uh, and it never moves. The trichloramines are especially irritating to the eyes, the nose and the lungs, and that's part of those chloramines. So a couple of things, just a couple of graphics, right? Um, it, the, the picture on the left, what this shows is, yeah, the air distribution, primary air distribution could still be at the top, although with some on the bottom. But we would actually have different levels of exhaust systems throughout the building. And then for seating, which is critical in here anyway, we would look to the bench evacuators and what the bench evacuators do is, that's the photo on the right. They actually distribute the clean air lower at the pool's surface so that it ensures constant air movement. And one thing we've all heard a lot about with, with COVID is air exchanges, right? This talks a lot and this guarantees and helps in a room this size, especially with this height to guarantee those air exchanges throughout the, the natatorium. Um, the conceptual solar placement. So this is a site map of BHS and what you see in the bluish purple is everywhere that we would be adding solar to hit our three hundred and seventy-five kilowatts that we need. So it would be on all of the buildings along Milvia, uh, as well as on the wings of C building. Um, we would also look to adjust the pitch of what's currently on the Donnie U gym. The way the solar is pitched, we are not maximizing the efficiency of the solar that's there. Um, and then we would ensure that the proper design and perhaps mechanical controls are used on the, on the new solar to maximize the efficiency as well and capture as much sunlight every single day. Um, so the process, it's very similar, it's very collaborative. There's preliminary designs, there's final designs and permits, and then you move to construction. Um, once you're out of construction, it's about commissioning and overall performance. And then training and support for our staff to continue to be able to maintain and use this properly. Um, and that's it. And I will open up to any questions.
All right.
And actually, let me, let me add this real quick because I want to be sure I'm clear. But what I'm asking the subcommittee for today is really, I'm looking to take this to the board and award this under forty-two seventeen to a direct contractor to start this process. And that's what I'm looking for. So this was an education on forty-two seventeen, but it was also with the intent that I bring this to the board as an action item with the contractor for this project.
We could do that on.
Yeah, well.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. If you want to do it on consent, you could do it. I, I, the thing that I do think would be good to publicize is the amount of solar energy that we're gonna be adding because I think that'll be very, you know, popular. Um, but maybe you can do that at the point that, you know, like a progress report or something.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, we definitely could. Um, and we have, just so you know, Judy, we've awarded, um, two other projects under forty-two seventeen since I've been here as well, just so you know.
Okay. So I'm fine with being under consent?
Yeah, and I, and you know, there's other ways to publicize it too. It could be in the A plus news or, you know, other communications besides the board meeting. So, um, yeah, do we remind me, and maybe if you said this, I apologize, will the pool be out of commission?
For some, but not all. So some of the interior, and we would work obviously with our ADs over there to understand the scheduling. Um, but the reality of it is, is during the off season is when they can do the majority of the interior work. And there's some interior work that'll have to be done once they finish everything else, but the, the impact to the, we don't anticipate an impact to the swim season. And obviously we would need to work further with the contractor to ensure that. But at the high level that we've looked at this tie, I don't believe it's gonna be an issue.
And water polo either?
No, no. So all, all of our sports. But again, I do have to, I do need to look at the calendars and confirm this with our, with our partner, with our contracting partner. And then furthermore, what we would want to do is we have worked with Cal a few times on the joint use agreement, trying to get the pool. And to my dismay, I will tell you, we've gotten nowhere. Uh, I think we may need to apply a little bit of pressure on the fact that it is a joint use um, in the sense of that we have the sharing agreement and we tend to open our doors, but we tend to get the doors closed on us. So I think we may need to push back a little on that.
Well, I just wanted, I would, and I know Shanita knows this, this, what'd you say?
I was going to say that, um, John with Cal, I, I was able to get some really good, um, good, we, we were able to kind of get the pool, um, if we needed it in a sense. So I would say I, I'm in a good place with Cal. Uh, in terms of working with them, but again, it, it was after kind of reminding them about the reciprocal agreement. And it wasn't, and it wasn't their main pool. It was kind of a, it was a different pool. But we were able to kind of get access to a pool the last time our, our contractor was in there. But yes, we do still need to kind of continue those conversations.
Yeah, because we had to, as I recall it, we had to push back a lot because what they originally offered us was we would have time after open swim time. So after a leisure is when they would consider scheduling ours and we really pushed back and it sounds like Shanita did a great job on that.
Yeah, and I know Shanita, you've been working on that for, for a long time and, and that you know, as John does too, but you know even better, the long history of the pool problems at, at the high school. And I, so I just wanted to emphasize the communication with the swim and water polo parents.
Absolutely. And that's, it's my understanding of those problems is why I'm pushing this project forward.
Yeah.
We've been looking to do this for a while.
Yeah, they've, they've, um, they've been given the runaround and had it for a long time. So, um, it would be great to do that and to make sure that they know exactly. And to do, to do everything we can to not impact their seasons.
Mm-hmm.
Right. It just sounds like what you're doing. So that's good.
Great. All right. Anything else on this item?
That was all I have.
Great. Um, well, it looks like the next thing on our agenda is just to pick a next meeting time and I guess I'm gonna leave that up to all of you because I won't be here.
So, um, we can definitely work on that now or Ty, if you'd like, we can see. Cause I believe on the second, you guys also reappoint committees. I'm hoping you continue, or on the night. Yeah, I'm hoping you continue to sit on.
Yes.
But would you like to try to schedule that now or?
No, let's, I think we should wait and see who else, sees who else is gonna be on the committee, who's gonna be on it, and then we can.
Alrighty, well.
Did I break up? Did I, did I freeze?
A little bit, but I got that. You want to wait and see who's on the committee?
Yeah, I just wanted to say to both of you before, I mean, to both John and Shanita before we sign off that I really have appreciated working with you. You've both done an amazing job. And I'm really proud of the facilities work that we've done and that you've done. And so I really look forward to, you know, to, to watching it continue.
Thank you.
Total confidence.
I, I've really, really enjoyed working with you and I've enjoyed you sort, your guidance over the years, uh, both on the facilities committee and on the board. Um, it's been a real pleasure working with you and you'll definitely be missed. So thank you for everything that you've done to support this, this department and this school district.
Thank you. All right. So should we adjourn the meeting?
Sure.
All right. Thank you all. And I will see you all tomorrow night.
Sounds good.
All right.
All right. Bye, everybody. Thank you.
Take care.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Have a good one.